Yes. Do you want to do Rick and then Dale, and then I'll do the last one with the pot-bellied pig? Is that okay?
Yeah.
I'm pretty excited about this. Hap wanted to do it, but we called him off.
I'm in defense of the pot-bellied pig. As long as I get to feed him a dog.
Whenever you want. Wait a minute.
Nixon.
Oh, is it, yeah, Nixon.
Zaleski's absent.
He's, he's absent.
We're gooding? Good evening, everybody. I'll call the common council meeting to order tonight. We see everyone is in, except Mr. Zaleski is absent. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C, public comment. At this time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council. Upon recognition by the mayor, persons may address the council from the podium first stating their name and address. Council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address? Please. Dale.
Dale Christensen, Central Wisconsin State Fair, 513th, East Seventeenth Street. I guess I'd like to say that last week was the holding of the Central Wisconsin State Fair, and the fair board and the fair employees, along with the whole city of Marshfield, was blessed with some beautiful weather, and it helped us pull off our event quite well. Attendance at this year's fair was up approximately thirty percent over what it was last year. We're looking at ballpark figures of forty-five thousand-plus people attended this year's fair. We had, we changed some things this year. Instead of hiring as many people as we have in the past for working gates, we reached out to volunteer groups and organization service groups if they would be willing to work gates and stuff for us this year, and we would make a donation to their group. We had several churches that stepped up and, and worked the gates for us, and they did it, said that they did not want anything in return for it. And Tuesday, we were a bit short on volunteers, but as the week progressed, more and more people were stepping forward and helping us out. Our grandstand shows went very well. The two monster truck shows on Saturday were, were pretty much sellouts. And overall, I think I just wanted to report, say thank you to the departments and everybody that worked with us. The carry with the beer, we did not have any incidences with, problems with that either. So everything worked out well, and just wanted to give that report.
Thank you. All right, anyone else from the public wish to address the council? Nick, please state your name and address.
Nicholas Cum, Marshfield Utilities, 2000 South Central. During a common council meeting about a month ago, utility along with city departments was recognized by the mayor and others for the great work done by keeping all people safe, cleaning debris, and restoring power during a major storm event that hit the community July nineteenth and twentieth. In addition, a member of the council approached me during a break to bring forth a concern about one of their constituents. I welcome working directly with each of you with any concerns you may have. Thank you, Ms. Sparrows, for the most recent opportunity. During the two storms, Marshfield Utilities experienced outage to around twenty-four hundred customers, around twenty percent of our customer base, with outages ranging from a few hours to over a day. All available and qualified staff members in our electric department, fourteen employees in total, changed their weekend plans, said goodbye to their families at the drop of a hat to respond and restore power to the families, friends, and neighbors in the community they call home, many of them working nearly straight through over a forty hour, forty-eight hour period to restore power. Without the dedication of our staff, aggressive tree trimming practices, conversion of facilities from overhead to underground, and the progressive system replacement of aged infrastructure in places at MU, the quantity and duration of the outages could have been worse. I am sure many of you have read and heard of the numerous communities and locations across the state that lost power for multiple days. In hindsight, we were very fortunate. When large outages like this occur, the ability to determine how long the power will be off is not feasible. The sheer volume of outages makes it difficult to get to every location in a timely manner just to assess the extent of the damage. During the course of restoring power, we follow a process that has the flexibility to change as conditions and situations do. First, we try to support the local fire and police departments with active fires and wires down across the roads that pose safety risk. Then we try to address outages that affect the largest number of customers. From there, we move on to the smaller outages. Throughout, we try to triage any new emerging issues as, as time permits. When storm events of this magnitude move through the area, customers should expect extended power outage lengths. Our community has grown accustomed to the quick and dependable restoration efforts Marshfield Utility provides. And while we will continue to focus on providing reliable, safe, and affordable power to our customers, we recommend each customer take this most recent weather event to develop a strategy to ensure their safety and preparedness for future events. Customers should ensure they have resources like backup generators and DC-powered sound pumps at their disposal as needed, and they should work with qualified contractors to ensure they understand how to operate and install the equipment properly. improper installation of a backup, I'm sorry, the improper installation of a backup generator can pose a serious safety risk, not only to the property owner, but to our staff working on the power lines due to the back feed issues. In addition, in the, in the coming months, I'm sorry, in the coming weeks, MU will be adding resources to our website, posting information on Facebook, and working with local media, including with Tom Locke, the city communication director, on a video, providing preparedness tips for future events. I'm very proud of the exceptional efforts of the entire staff of Marshfield Utilities. We are grateful for the outpouring of support from the community during and after this event. We'll continue to take steps to provide safe, reliable, and low-cost power our customers expect, and we are proud to be your local, community-owned, public utility. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to address the council? Seeing none, we will go to item D.
I think the chief was going to talk, give an update on the state fair, were you not?
Take it away, chief.
Yep, just to kind of piggyback on what Dale had said. We didn't have any issues whatsoever when it came to serving and those that were served being able to walk the fairgrounds. We actually heard quite a few positive comments from this. People saying anything from, "I'm glad I don't have to slam my beer and catch up with my family," to, "It's really nice to be trusted to walk the fairgrounds with having a beverage." So we may look at doing this in the future at this event or other events. I appreciate the support that we did receive, and overall, I would say that it was a very safe and enjoyable event for everybody that attended from our officer's perspective.
Thank you. Now, anyone from the public? Anyone else from the public wish to address the council? No, all right. Seeing none, we'll go to item D. Is there a motion to the, to approve the minutes of August thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen? Motion by Mrs. Sparrows, second by Mr. Pashow. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. That motion carries nine to zero. Staff updates. Steve.
Yeah, first, I apologize, Mayor, for getting out of, out of order there. I was thinking we were down to staff updates when we were still on public comment. At our last meeting on August thirteenth, a gentleman came forward under public comment and indicated he had an interest in having a pot-bellied pig at his residence, and there was a question as to whether or not that would be allowed and under what circumstance. So staff took it under advisement. There's been some conversations back and forth between the city clerk, myself, Josh Miller as the development services director, and others. And there is a code, section nine dash five-two, that talks about the keeping of animals in fall, and it would seem to address this. What this code section does is it does provide a process whereby someone could, with the recommendation of the building services supervisor and ultimately approval by the city clerk, could have a license issued, or I think it's actually a permit issued, to keep one of certain types of animals on a residential property. However, one of the conditions is that they be at least two hundred feet away from any other surrounding homes. So the individual at nine thirteen South Maple Avenue who came forward would not be eligible for such a permit because there are other homes within that distance of where he'd be keeping the animal. Having said that, in talking with Josh, we've kind of identified that the, this code section is a little bit antiquated. There's a reference to a committee on health that we no longer really have anymore, and it hasn't been updated for a while. So we'd like to take this under advisement and take a look at the ordinance and see if any changes are necessary. Now, that wouldn't necessarily mean shortening the distance from two hundred feet to some other number, but we can at least let the, the individual know that this ordinance will be reviewed and updated in some way, if, if nothing more than to make it current in terms of the language and the way it reads. So for this moment, and we will be conveying this back to him, he is not eligible for the permit referenced in nine point fifty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Whitzel.
Thank you. So two hundred feet from a house, meaning that in all likelihood, that property would have to be four hundred foot square at the very minimum? And we have a lot of properties that are four hundred foot square at the minimum? Because I don't think of too many in my neighborhood that would be more than, say, a hundred and twenty feet wide. So does this, if you eliminate almost all properties in the city, we're having the ordinance written the way it is?
Yeah, and I believe there's also a term in that ordinance that talks about outlying areas. And really, this is intended to be, we have a zoning district called RH thirty-five, which is our rural holding. Essentially, it's a holding district that, when some properties are annexed and they're not sure what we want to zone it to yet, it would be kind of a holding district, and it's more, more for agricultural uses. Most of those properties within that are five acres or larger, they're supposed to be. Anything in the, in the core of the, of the community where a subdivision is, wouldn't typically fit that. Two hundred feet, most lots aren't two hundred feet wide, not alone four hundred feet, so.
I should have read the phrase "outlying district." That, that does seem to be the intent, is that it would be around the perimeter of the city. But if you think about it logically, like Josh just said, you're not going to find anything on the interior that's, that, you know, has that much separation. So anyway, yeah, the intent seems to be it's, it's the outlying areas of the city that may not even have developed very much at that point.
I guess I'm questioning the need for an ordinance that basically says, "Yeah, you can, but you can't because your property's not big enough," unless we look at the ordinance and maybe shrink that or simply strike it because it doesn't have a value.
And that's a valid point, but I think the, the intent was if you want to live in town and you live in an outlying area that doesn't, isn't, aren't surrounded by other neighbors essentially, you could do this, otherwise you wouldn't be able to do it at all. So it still gives people an opportunity to do it if they live in certain areas.
I still have some concerns about Tom because it refers to horses, mules, donkeys, ponies, cows, pigs, goats, sheep. I think we may want to take a look at even the wording of what we would allow. I mean, just because you're two hundred feet away from neighboring property owners and you, you know, live in more of an outlying area, I, I think we may want to revisit whether we'd allow people to have literally a farm at that point.
Mrs. Sparrows.
I, I'm not familiar with the ordinance. I didn't read it prior to the meeting, so sorry about that. But I have a couple of questions. So in just listening to what, what things are said, is, it, it sounds like we're, we are talking about farm animals, but is a pot-bellied pig a farm? Don't people keep pot-bellied pigs inside like they do a dog?
I think you can, yeah.
I mean, but don't they? I mean, isn't that what, that's what I thought they are. I thought they were indoor animals.
Yeah, they generally are.
I, I, I would like to see some sort of a distinction between an animal that would be kept primarily indoors versus an actual farm animal that would be living outdoors. Because I think, I think there is a difference. I don't know why you need to be that far away from your neighbor if your animal lives indoors. That's just my opinion.
That's a good point, and, and, you know, there's other kind of animals that aren't referenced in this code, and, and, you know, you, you make a good point. That's almost a pet at that point, I think is what the individual would probably say. So maybe this entire section needs to be revisited and see what we come up with.
Thank you. Any other staff updates?
Just a reminder, I know I do this at every meeting, but just one more time to mention that on Thursday at six o'clock, we have a meeting here on the agencies outside of city government looking for financial assistance in the two thousand and twenty budget, and then also next Wednesday at six-thirty, half an hour later than our normal meeting time, we'll be having the discussion, the presentation, and Q and A on ethics, conflict of interest, those types of public official things. And we already have about fifteen committee members who apparently have indicated interest to Amy that they would like to attend, so we'll have some representation from committees and, and boards, too.
Mrs. Sparrows.
I'm sorry, just in, um... In reference to the subject with the pot-bellied pigs, I forgot something. It seemed to me the gentleman already owned a pot-bellied pig, or that's the impression I got. So I would ask that we grant him some leeway while we work on this ordinance with that animal. Is that possible, or, I mean, he already owns it, I can't, I mean, what are we going to go to tell him that he has to get rid of it?
So I see a lot of looks over my desk. Well, you got the ordinance on the books. It hasn't been enforced in that situation, so sometimes it's better not to ask the question if you don't want the answer, because really, this body would have to change your ordinance if you were going to change that circumstance. That said, and I kept quiet during the discussion, but it really was identified through other legal issues too, outside of just the, the pot-bellied pig, that, you know, that there are some provisions in regard to animals that probably need to be updated, and, and, you know, that would be part of this discussion here. So to my knowledge, first of all, I, I mean, I know the suggestion was that he had the pig or whatever. He was looking at this permit process, but was sort of saying he didn't know how to go about that or didn't understand how it worked, but, you know, it would be up to animal ordinance to enforce that, and it doesn't sound like that's happening. The only option around that, this body can't give the directive, it wouldn't, you know, be my opinion, not to give the directive, not to go ahead and, and enforce this because you could create some problems by doing that. So in other words, if we say that we're not going to enforce it on the pot-bellied pig, and then we have somebody that comes in with some horses, we've got some issues that could create it. But I think, you know, I think the idea here is generally that no one's going out and issuing any tickets at this point, so hopefully we get this back on, you know, before the body. I think the idea, staff obviously understands that.
All right, thank you. Dan.
Thank you. I may have noticed in the board agenda, or in the board minutes, that the annual Board of Public Works bus tour has been scheduled for Monday, September ninth, leaving here at five-thirty PM. We'll tour several public works projects. Of course, the full council is invited to attend that bus trip, and we do usually have room for citizens if they'd like to attend. If anybody listening would like to attend, they can contact the Public Works office here at City Hall. Phone number is seven-one-five-three-eight-seven-eight-four-two-four, or contact your alderman and let him know you're interested. We'd be happy to have a few extra folks on the bus that night. So again, five-thirty PM on Monday, September ninth, leaving from right out here in front of City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff updates?
I'm not aware of any.
Tom?
Just to comment, Dan, I've got six people already that would like to go on that, so, and maybe more. I'll let you know first.
All right, next one, Mayor's comments, just two. I'm sure you already know, but this coming Friday is the opening of the new athletic stadium at the high school, and it's, it's a beau, if you've not been there yet, it is a beautiful stadium. The Booster Club was involved, and the, the school district, and many very gracious folks that donated a lot of money to put it together, and it is absolutely beautiful. The first game, the soccer game, is at four-thirty, then the football game is immediately following, I believe, at seven or seven-thirty, but it's, it's a beautiful stadium, so hope you are able to get by there. Second thing is, on Friday, I was able to go over to the, to the zoo and met with the, the zookeeper, Steve Burns. Great guy, just a great guy. And got a little tour of the bears and saw them eat and, and learned a lot of history of the zoo, and I will tell you what, this is a world-class zoo. And I guess what I was so proud of is all of the employees and the volunteers there at the zoo are so passionate about what they do. But I would really encourage you to go over there and see the bears and the new exhibit that's going in, but it really, really is impressive. I believe that it is the biggest zoo exhibit. It, it's even bigger than like the San Diego Zoo and many of them. So it's just a world-class zoo with a world-class employee, so it'd be a, a great time to go see it. Item G, council comments. Any council comments? Please, Mr. Bargender.
No, it's, oh, thank you, Mayor. Last week, during the Central Wisconsin State Fair, I volunteered approximately thirty hours as a gate supervisor. Starting my shift at six-thirty AM was very different than my regular daily routine. Although my job was sometimes very challenging, I found it very, a very rewarding experience working with other volunteers from age eight to eighty years old. Executive Director Dale Christensen and Office Administrator Ashley Sainer were very easy to work with and were open to my ideas and suggestions. Volunteering at the fair enlightened me to the hard work and dedication of the staff in the fair board, all working together to make the fair a pleasant experience for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? No? All right, any reports from commissions, boards, and committees? All right, item I, consent agenda. I entertain a motion to receive and place on file approving all recommended actions in the consent agenda. A motion by Mr. Buttke, second by Mrs. Sparrows. Discussion, Mr. Whitzel.
Thank you. I would like to pull an item from Board of Public Works. This would be item PW nineteen dash sixty-six, the one-way street on Second from Maple to Cedar.
All right, anything further? Seeing nothing further than, please go ahead and vote. Mr. Buttke? That motion carries nine to zero. All right, and now we will, what item was that, Tom?
It's from the Board of Public Works. It was action item PW nineteen dash sixty-six. It was the authorization of a temporary one-way street on Second from Maple to Cedar.
Okay.
And I guess I would like to see that gone, and I would move to not go down that route. And I have some specific discussion to bring up if now is appropriate or if there has to be a motion first. I'm not certain what the protocol would be here.
Be a motion, too.
It's removed, right, so.
So you want me to make a motion officially? There you go.
There in the, there.
Yeah, the minutes.
What is your motion, then?
To remove that and not do the one-way street, temporary, permanent, or otherwise.
That is the motion? Is there a second? There is not a second, so that fails, so now is that we have to vote on?
You know, I think you've approved the minutes otherwise, so I'm sorry.
There's a second, oh. Mr. Butt. Okay. You want to take that out, then? You want to take, okay.
We have to approve that, I think, don't we?
Right.
Oh, that, that motion, okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to make a motion on this.
So now, then, is there a motion, then, to approve PW nineteen sixty-six with the one-way street? A motion by Mr.? Okay. Motion by Mr. Buttke, second by Mr. Bargender? Discussion, Mr. Whitzel.
Thank you. I'd like to know the rationale between, behind increasing the length of the one-way street corridor and inconveniencing a great large portion of the city that travels from the south or from the east to access the park, or access the library via Second Street and are going to be forced to take a different route. Whoever wants to speak on that would be great.
Well, the request was brought to the Board of Public Works to take a look at options, or to the engineering division, to look at options of trying to create additional parking along that corridor. And that was one of the discussion items that was brought up at the Board of Public Works. There were two different options that were brought to the Board of Public Works for their review, and the Board of Public Works made a recommendation, do a trial period to see how that operated and how it functioned before expending any large dollars on that corridor change.
And what's the hope in doing this one way? How many more spaces?
Boy.
Ten spaces.
About ten spaces, yes.
Okay, so I, I drove through the parking lots in that area this weekend, and between the parking lot across the street, the parking lot in front of the library, and the parking lot behind the library, I counted two-hundred-and-thirty-three spots. If I add on the street parking, that's probably two-fifty, being a little bit conservative, but probably two-fifty. Ten space increase is a four percent increase, a mere four percent. Ever since I've been on this body, I have had people say, "I can't believe we have one-way streets. Please no more one-way streets." I have never had anybody say, "Hey, can we get some more one-way streets because I really love them?" And so I'm really concerned for a four percent increase, why we would be inconveniencing a large portion of people who are trying to access the library, again, like I mentioned, from the south or from the east, rather than perhaps starting by striping spaces because I have gone past the front of the library and front of the community center at times. And when people don't have space markings, they park very wide and very far away from each other. So if we put in space markings, I think we would just generally increase our parking and perhaps would not have to increase a lot of folks. Sorry, inconvenience a lot of folks.
So this issue arose from the folks at the senior center. There were a couple of issues that came up. One was they didn't have handicap parking right there in front of it. I guess the way the library was originally done, the handicap parking was over there. So that was phase one, because the seniors that utilized that a lot is where this all came from. So, and their, and their issue is, in that parking lot that you're talking about with all the two-hundred-and-thirty-three, when a senior is coming over there for, say, a potluck, now, this is from them, a potluck or something like that, and they see the lot is full, they're going to turn around and go home. So that's when the idea came that, well, what if we just put some parking lots in there? They were thrilled with that. So, so the people that use that center are the ones, that were the ones with the request, and the reason that it kind of, it really does make sense is because that's already a one-way street. If that wasn't already a one-way street, I, I'm with you a hundred percent, but it's already there. I really don't know how much through traffic it's going to, to do, which I think the way they came up with a trial period, give it a whirl, and if it doesn't work, take it back to a two-way street. But the seniors there, and there are many of them, have a, a serious concern about it, so.
So again, I, I guess I questioned ten spaces, and what's going to happen are those ten spaces are going to be filled very quickly. I don't believe those ten spaces are going to be handicap marked. I don't believe they're going to be marked for senior parking. I think they're just going to be spaces. And when those ten spaces are full and the parking lots are full, it's going to be the exact same situation. They're going to pull up, it's going to be full, they're going to turn around and go. In the meantime, people like myself and other people that live either in my neighborhood or again to the east, who come up Cedar Avenue, who turn on Second to go to the library, can no longer go to the library. So now we're going to have to go to a different route and try to get to the library because we're now extending a one-way against traffic to get us to the library. And I realize that Maple to Central is already one-way, but my intention is not to get to Central. My intent is to get to the library, which I can no longer do if this becomes a one-way, without taking some other alternate route.
Laurie?
Actually, if you come up Cedar, you can park in the parking lot off of Cedar in the back of the library. So there is parking back there. We did talk about other things we could do in terms of letting people know about additional parking back there, signage and whatever. The advantage I see to the, at least the temporary test for this is we find out that by switching the parking to the side of the street where the community center rests, we don't have people crossing Second Street to get to the community center.
Mr. Buttke?
Yeah, I agree with everything the mayor said, the reasons he gave. But I, and Mike can speak for himself, I think he's going to. But Mike said during the public works meeting, "Let's not base it on they just don't want one-way streets. Let's base it on if it's going to fix parking that's needed there."
Mrs. Sparrows. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Fire, I'm sorry.
You know, when you talk about, you're coming up Cedar, it's simple. Turn on Third, and then you get right to Maple. Just turn one, one street before Second, because if you go to Second, you hit a one, one-way street. If you take Third, you go to Central, or you can go to...
If you take Third, you go to Central or you can go to the, go either way. Third takes you right to Central. Second doesn't. You have to stop at Maple and then you have to turn left or right. So the easiest way, come up Cedar, turn on Third, and it's not a problem. And I'm doing this for a reason because the people, i- i- if you're gonna see what, what happens around that building, start at ten thirty till three o'clock. That's the time to look at the parking. That's when you're not gonna find any parking in that place at all. There's a lot of parking down behind the Old City Hall, but somebody eighty-seven years old cannot walk that block and a half to get to the center. So there is much parking as we can get for these seniors is what we need. And if anybody that's able to walk can't navigate a one-way street for a block, I don't know what I can do for them. Uh, it's just, it's, it's for the convenience of the people that are using the center. And you're gonna see that that center's gonna be used more than it is now because their bingo's picking up, their lunches are picking up, and there's a few other things that might happen that might increase the usage. We have to have parking for these people that are eighty-plus or seventy-plus. You know, I hate to say seventy, that's a, getting to be right up right around my age. I could still walk that far. We have to at least try. And I said at the public works, i- if you do a survey and make sure you ask the survey, is it because you don't want a one-way street or you want the parking? And I'll tell you what, the people are gonna say we need the parking. And at sixteen, you'll, you'll create ten more and it'll give a sixteen on that street when we only have six now. So that makes a big difference.
Mrs. Spurros?
Yeah, I wanted to just follow up and, and let everybody know that I've received several phone calls from elderly folks from my district, um, asking about the handicap parking and things like that, complaining really that there wasn't enough. And then especially, um, that is also my voting district. That's where I go to vote. And on the, on the day of the election, I had gotten at least two, maybe three calls that day or one the following day regarding the handicap parking. And I did pass that on. I, I can't remember who I sent it to, but I had sent it right away that, um... So I, I do know that that problem exists and that, that, um, they are concerned about that, so.
Mr. McSwain?
Yeah, and I guess to reinforce about those other parking spaces, uh, not only are they further away and those of us who are older, I think, identify with this a little bit more, but also they're used for a lot of other things. The other thing that I would like to point out is that other options for increasing parking there would be much more expensive and involve a lot more work.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote. And that motion carries eight to one. Uh, item K, request to approve budget resolution number, uh, ten dash two oh one nine, transferring thirteen thousand within the law enforcement donation fund to law enforcement capital outlay, fifty-five hundred in law enforcement operating supplies, seventy-five hundred to purchase a drone presented by Rick Ramsup, police chief.
Thank you. Uh, we had, um, been given numerous donations from the community to go towards the purchase of a drone for the police department and fire department, really the city of Marshfield as a whole to utilize uh, for lifesaving efforts for investigations, et cetera. Ten thousand dollars was raised to go towards this as well as, uh, additional monies were set aside through, um, drug investigation revenues. So the hope is if this gets passed is to invest that thirteen thousand dollars into the purchase of a drone and drone program uh, to where our staff would be trained in operation and utilization of that piece of equipment that largely was donated by, uh, the city. Uh, there'll be no impact related to the, uh, to, related to tax base, um, regarding, um, this initial purchase.
Thank you. So as our motion to approve budget resolution number ten dash two oh one nine, uh, motion by Mrs. Spurros, second by Mr. McSwain. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Mister, there we go. Uh, motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you.
Uh, item L, first reading of ordinance number fourteen seventeen, pay for council members presented by Steve Bark, city administrator.
Thank you. Um, in late two thousand fifteen, I conducted a survey of other comparable communities regarding council pay. And this was something that has happened, I believe, periodically over the years, just checking to see how we compare to uh, people in Stevens Point, Wisconsin Rapids, and other communities for how we pay our elected officials. Uh, in early twenty sixteen, the council reviewed that survey and, and determined that the city of Marshfield council was being paid less than some of its, uh, neighboring comparables. So there was a lot of discussion about what to do about that. Ultimately, what was decided was that perhaps the best idea was to, uh, tie council raises to, uh, future raises to non-represented employees. So that whatever we did, we wouldn't fall behind and be looking back ten years later and say, "Oh, my gosh, we've fallen way behind again. How did that happen?" So what was passed back then in the summer of two thousand, um, sixteen was an ordinance that said, "Okay, we have to make sure that every council person has gone through an election." So it wouldn't be effective until May first of twenty eighteen. But at that point, it would tie council pay raises to the percentage given to non-represented staff in that same year. The, uh, ordinance, as I said, was approved. And then in, uh, twenty eighteen, council pay was increased by two percent from three seventy-five a month to three eighty-two fifty a month. That's the base pay apart from special meetings, uh, because that's what, uh, non-re- non-represented employees got. This year, uh, it was brought to my attention by other staff, the question as to whether or not that would be lawful on an ongoing basis. The city clerk actually flagged it because typically councils have to vote themselves a pay raise. It's uncomfortable, obviously, uh, but that's what the, uh, the intent of statute was, in her opinion. I contacted the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, talked to Assistant Legal Counsel Maria Davis, and after doing some research, she concurred. She said that it's not maybe a hundred percent, but it would appear that the spirit of Wisconsin statutes would say that you could not do an ongoing automatic pay raise for elected officials. So her thought was, the raise given to council in, uh, the summer of two thousand eighteen was appropriate uh, because they did vote for it in twenty sixteen, so that two percent was good. But to say that that's gonna happen in nineteen, twenty, twenty-one and beyond, just because of an ordinance passed in sixteen, would appear to get away from the spirit of the state statute. I checked with the city attorney. I think he basically concurred as well with, with her opinion. So the ordinance you have in front of you tonight would strike, first of all, would change the current rate from three seventy-five to three eighty-two fifty to match what you're getting right now. But then it would strike out the one sentence that talked about the annual raise based upon, uh, non-represented employees' pay raises. And, uh, just pull that right out, put us back where we were before two thousand sixteen. Uh, this ordinance, number fourteen seventeen, is not for action tonight. It's, uh, it's just for your review. And if there is no, are no questions, I'd bring it forward on September tenth for second reading and adoption.
Thank you. Mr. Buttke?
I know how to solve that as well. I've never voted for a pay raise for older persons. Uh, we don't make that much. We're not in it for the money, so, uh, I'll continue when it comes up, when, uh, we look at raising it, uh, voting.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alright, we'll go to, uh, item M, request to approve and implement a housing incentive program presented by, uh, Josh Miller, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you are probably well aware of, uh, the situation that we have in the, in the single-family and two-family housing lots, uh, situation in Marshfield, that we, we just don't have a lot available for development. Um, we've talked about this last year at kind of a state of the housing, uh, discussion. We've identified that as part of the housing, um, study this past year. And, uh, really, when we, when we break it down, there's, there's anywhere from thirty to forty, thirty-five to forty desirable subdivision lots in the community. There's, as I've said before, there's a lot of other lots that are either infill lots or substandard lots. Um, but really, if you're gonna look for attracting development, you have to have viable lots and you have to have options for lots in the community. And right now, we, we, and, and those thirty-five to forty are really limited. Um, and there's only a couple of subdivisions that you'd really be looking at being able to build in. Um, in the past couple of years, we've averaged about fourteen homes, single-family homes, uh, being built per year. And so if you do the math, we don't have a whole lot of, uh, inventory left or a number of years left based on the available inventory. So we've been working pr- uh, pretty hard with the Economic Development Board. And then we kind of splintered off and worked with Mackey, uh, with the housing study or, uh, with the Housing Committee and identified, we, we worked with developers, we worked with realtors, uh, representative of the clinic and the banking institution, um, institutions, just to try to get a handle on what, what are we missing? What do we need to do? And, uh, this policy is a result of that effort. Really what we're looking at doing is providing some incentive to develop infrastructure to open up additional lots. And those lots may be able to be developed for both single-family or two-family homes. And what we mean by, excuse me, mean by single-family isn't just limited to a single-family detached home. It would include townhouses, condos, twin homes, uh, things where it's primarily owner-occupied, but, but could allow for some, uh, renters. Um, and that's one of the discussion points in, in my staff report that, that, uh, the original draft policy that we went through included a provision that excluded any kind of rentals. Uh, when we went through it with the EDB last week, they said that it just adds for confusion. Let's say a developer wants to build a home and then he's got another LLC and he wants to sell it to another, um, uh, basically himself, and he wants to rent it, what would stop him from doing that? How would we find out? So really, the tracking got kind of, um, daunting. And so, uh, essentially what the program does is it allows, uh, the, the Board of Public Works to review an application. Uh, so the developer would go through an application process. That application, along with others, would be reviewed, uh, at the same time so we could kind of identify which projects would either be more fitting with the goals and intent of the housing study, um, and, and match what our needs are and, and maybe fill some of our gaps in our housing, uh, in- inventory. Uh, we would go through that process, um, and, and staff would walk the Board of Public Works through that. Um, what ultimately the, the commitment is, is the city would, um, front, uh, or the developer would front the, the first, um, excuse me, hang on one second. Um, let me, let me back up just one second. The, um, the, the goal would be to have the, the city walk through, um, the, the application process with the Board of Public Works. The, the developer would be responsible for, for the first ten percent of the cost. So they would have some skin in the game right away. They would pay, uh, we have it as a thousand-dollar application fee. Uh, after that, that would give the staff time to, and, and some, um, funding to do the engineering for the project. We would be engineering the project. We would be overseeing the bidding process, uh, administering the bidding process, awarding it and managing the construction of the project so we make sure that it's meeting our standards, um, and doing the infra- uh, infrastructure inspection. The next, um, forty to sixty percent of the project would be covered by the city. And the city's contribution would include both the Economic Development Board's contribution and then the Common Council's contribution, which we're asking to put into the budget for twenty twenty. Um, the Economic Development Board has committed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four CIP. The, uh, Common Council approved, uh, putting that into the budget. Uh, we know that process still has to take place, but, um... So after that, the, the fifty to sixty percent would be the city contribution. And the reason we put a range in there is to really allow for some flexibility to, to basically weight the project. So if there's a more de- desirable project that we feel it's a more pressing need, the city could fund it at a little bit of a higher level. If, uh, if it's a lower priority, we could fund it at a lower level. And again, this is all gonna be based on the applications that we receive and the amount of funding that's available. Um, the city would then, the, the developer would then be responsible for the remaining portion, which would be anywhere from thirty to forty percent. That remaining portion would be recouped by special assessment. Uh, and that would be at the time, triggered by the, by the, either the lot being developed and or sold. Um, ultimately, the real meat of, of how this all works and functions is, is through, uh, the development agreement, which would be required. So, uh, the Board of Public Works would review the, the applications, um, identify, select some that they would wanna move forward with. Once that takes place, then we would enter into a development agreement, which would hammer out all the specifics that we need to cover our bases and, and as well as, uh, ensure who's doing what in the project. Um, when we talked about, um, we, we went through the Board of Public Works on, on August nineteenth. Uh, they, they were very supportive of it and unanimously approved it. Um, I did the, the process a little backwards, but because of timing, I had to take it to the Board of Economic Development Board after the Board of Public Works. So I apologize for that. But in their discussion, they identified three additional things that they wanted to include in, in the policy. And that would, in section one A, we, we had a rental restriction. They suggested remove that for the reasons I s- I've spoken on already. Um, section five A, one, uh, triple I, they said, uh, originally it was limiting ten percent of the market. They could, the developer couldn't sell the pro- the lots. Uh, they would cap the, the price at ten percent of the market, um, value. Uh, but it was kind of ambiguous as to when that would, would, would kick in. And we said, "Well, the first three years, they could sell it at whatever they wanted to." But after three years, then we wanna bring it back down to the market value, so they can't just sit on the lots. They're, they're encouraged to try to move those lots. The sooner they get built on, the sooner we get the tax base back and, and, and get the assessments back. And then the final thing, which I know is probably gonna be a discussion point here tonight, um, they had asked for beginning the special assessments to be refunded back into the, uh, Economic Development Board two oh five fund, which is basically what the dividend comes into from the Marshfield Utilities every year. And that's the fund that they've built up over the years to, to do economic development activities. Um, both they and through the CIP, they've committed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the next three years. Um, without some type of revenue regeneration, that fund will get depleted very fast. Uh, they also have a commitment to, uh, look to acquire industrial parkland, um, that we have an option on in, in, in the next couple of years. So they, they're committed to, to spending money and utilizing it in ways we, we haven't fully done in the past. However, um, dwindling that down to, to nothing would be a challenge. And so, uh, the way it's listed in the policy is to refund that completely. I think there's, obviously, it's up to the council to do that. Uh, they could also split it. Uh, so they're, you know, that, or, or some level. Or they could take the whole thing. It's up to you guys. But I think that the Economic Development Board does have an interest in, in re-recycling this money to continue to invest it in, in economic development activities, specifically this project. So, um, with those changes, obviously, we're happy to address any questions, but, uh, staff would recommend approving the policy. And just for clarification, the current policy does have that that funding would go into the Economic Development Board two oh five fund, uh, based on, from the, um, special assessments.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? A motion by Mr. Buttke, second by Mr. Handler. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you.
Item N, report final accounting of City Hall relocation, uh, project presented by Dan Connect, Director of Public Works.
Thank you. Now that the project here in the, in City Hall is complete, we thought it'd be good to bring back a final assessment of, uh, final accounting of how the, the project ended up. And I thought the best place to start would probably be at the beginning. And that was back in, uh, two thousand fifteen, when the city first considered, uh, started considering, uh, the purchase of this building. Uh, the budget and, uh, the scope of the project, scope of the project evolved over time. And I wanna hit just a few of the highlights of, uh, what occurred over the last, uh, four years or so. It was in October of two thousand fifteen that, uh, the city hired Zimmerman Architectural Studios to do a preliminary assessment of this building at kind of a high level just to see, uh, Wood City Hall operations fit within this building. At that time, a, a budget resolution of fifteen thousand dollars was approved for that preliminary step. It included, uh, some, uh, conceptual layouts here, uh, not a detailed floor plan. And it also included, uh, a condition, a, a basic condition assessment. Uh, it did result in, in our first cost estimate for the remodeling, which was a range of between five hundred and five hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that was back, uh, based on two thousand sixteen dollars. Uh, then in, in May of two thousand sixteen, the council, uh, approved the, the purchase, offered a purchase of this building. And at that same time, a budget resolution of one hundred thousand dollars was approved to fund the earnest money, uh, for that, uh, offer as well as to engage an architect, uh, for detailed design and cost estimating of, of this building, uh, of, of the remodeling for this building. And one of the first goals of that, uh, of the architect once they were brought on board was to evaluate options of locating the council chambers here on first floor as opposed to the lower level. For those of you that recall our first tour of this building, uh, before our, while the bank was still in place, we saw their community room downstairs, which was, uh, another, uh, basement council chambers, which would not have been ideal. So we were, we're pretty, um, uh, excited about being able to, uh, take a closer look at this in, in May of sixteen then to see if we could move council chambers up here. Uh, so, uh, at that time then, Design Unlimited was hired through an RFP process. Uh, and then by January of two thousand seventeen, they were ready to come back to the council with the revised floor plan, uh, which was presented to the council at that time. And it showed the layout of this council chambers here on first floor. Uh, at that time, we tweaked a few things in the, um, in the layout. We, we added that door. One of you brought that up about having a, an exit out of this, this room that was added at that time. And in January of seventeen, staff presented, uh, a cost estimate of seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand for the project. Um, and that was based on, uh, remodeling. I had a breakdown in my memo. Uh, remodeling of about five seventy-six and then several other allowances because the scope wasn't entirely, uh, clear on a lot of these areas. But we knew there was gonna be a need for fiber optic connection, working with Marshfield Utilities. We had a furniture allowance, a security system allowance, a, a council chambers technology allowance, signage allowance, and so, some contingency in the budget at that time, mainly just placeholders on a lot of these items, but, uh, the total at that time was seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand. And then, uh, moving on to November of seventeen, when our two thousand eighteen budget was adopted, um, the budget included three million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand for this new City Hall project. Two point six million of that was for the acquisition of the property and about seven hundred and seventy-one thousand for the remodeling. And then finally, in March of two thousand eighteen, we received the bids for the remodeling project and the-
And the low bid came in over budget. So staff went through the scope of the project and identified several reductions and shaved off about $74,000 from the project cost. And then to complete the final funding, we recommended a budget transfer of $25,000 of undesignedated fund balance from the public capital, Public Facilities Capital Fund to complete that project funding. And that was essentially money that was unspent from projects at the old City Hall. So we transferred that to the, to this project. So the third page of my memo that's in your packet tonight shows the summary of these budgeted funds over the course of that four-year time span. And the total budgeted amount was just over 3.5 million, $3,511,124. And then I also break down the expenses that we spent over the course of the project, and they totaled $3,498,000. And the actual renovation cost, just the renovation, was about $655,000. Then we, of course, we had the architectural and design fees and all of the allowances that we had in early estimate were now firm numbers based on actual costs. And again, the final, the final price tag was 300, just shy of 3.5 million. Now, I point out in my memo that there were a couple of related project expenditures that are not in that total. One is the cable TV budget. Did end up purchasing some new video equipment for this move from old City Hall to new City Hall. They also took that opportunity to convert from an analog to a digital system, which is an upgrade to the cable TV operation. That equipment would have been necessary at some point in the future, so we felt it was appropriate for the cable TV to cover that cost for that equipment. And then the other item that was not in our initial budget was that because the city closed on this property mid-year, there was a property tax liability that came with the property. We were responsible for the balance of the property taxes in 2018, and that share of city property taxes was just over $51,000. That was paid out of our contingency account at that time, as it was not included in the original project budget. So again, the final accounting, about 3.5 million in budgeted funds, just short of that in total expenses, and another roughly $80,000 in additional related expenses. So I was curious how that compared to some other building projects that have gone on recently. If we took the 3.5 million divided by the 22,000-plus square foot that we gained in this building, it was about $156 per square foot for the acquisition and remodeling of this property. If you recall back to the PD study when we were looking at costs for a new building there, just the construction of a new building was $240 to $260 a square foot, not including acquisition or site development costs. So if you look at the per-square-foot expenditure we had in this building, very reasonable. And then I looked, just out of curiosity, I looked at the new forward financial building based on their building permit information, and that was a 2016 project. And just the cost of that construction was about $218 per foot, square foot. So I think the relative cost of this acquisition and remodel was very affordable. One last thing I wanted to mention was on the operational side. The old City Hall, five-year average of operational costs from 2014 to 2018 was about $233,000 per year, and that's not including any staff time. In our new City Hall, we've been here about 11 months, so I've got data through July 31st. And if I prorate that to 12 months, we're about $97,000 would be our expected annual cost of operation here. So from $233,000 to $97,000, reduction in operational costs for City Hall. I think we can do a little better on that number. We're still sorting out some maintenance contracts and some final cost, operational items in the building, but I think in the end we'll be under $100,000 per year to operate this building. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the project or the budget.
Thank you. Mr. Butke.
Yeah, I've talked to many of the staff members, and the functionability of this building is much better. I know at the old City Hall, I was always for getting security, better security there if we were going to stay there. And this building takes care of a lot of that. So maybe you want to just expand on how it works much better. You don't have people walking all over the building and so on and so forth.
Sure, I can mention, just from a functional standpoint, you know, in the old building, we'd always see people standing by the elevator, looking at the directory there, trying to figure out which floor they could, would have to go to. Here, they can park 50 steps from the main desk and come right on in and get their service all at one counter. So we've been able to consolidate from, I think, five or six customer service desks spread out on four different floors to one central customer service desk here at this, in this building. The other thing it does from a staff perspective is we see each other much more often. Now, I believe it's a much more cohesive, friendly, we get to get, see each other often, share meals, that kind of thing. And I think there's been some real camaraderie that's built between city staff. In the other building, you would go weeks or months without seeing people in different departments just because they are on different floors and whatnot. So I think that's been kind of a morale booster here for staff to be working much more closely together. It's much more efficient than the other building. We're all within, maybe too close sometimes, Josh, right? But we're all, we're all right together. So if there's an issue we need to resolve, we can get together and whether it's a customer-driven or an internal issue, we can jump right on it. So I think those kinds of things have been very helpful, and it's hard to put a value on those things, but they're definitely there.
Thank you. Mrs. Sparrows.
Dan, one of my things that I've always disliked here is when the council just gets pieces and parts of budgets and you hear it, because the project takes a long time, and I understand why that happens. So I just wanted to thank you for bringing a final number and presenting the whole case to us. It kind of put everything together. And I know that was probably a lot of work, but thank you.
All right. It was eye-opening for me, too, just to see, I mean, I track these budgets, but until you sit down at the end and make sure it all worked out, it's good to know that it worked, so.
Mr. Whittle.
Thank you. So under budget.
Under budget.
When's the last time a project from the city came in under budget?
They usually do. And I think Mrs. Sparrows digs up a good point. We don't report often enough on our successes, and I think we want to do more of that, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Handler.
Thank you, Your Honor. Dan, you've done a remarkable job, and I knew that job was going to be done completely when they appointed you to do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve.
Yeah, Mr. Handler took some of my thunder away, but Dan did an outstanding job of overseeing this project from start to finish, from the day that we began engaging with Ford about acquiring it, all the way through working with Design Unlimited and everybody and to this report. So excellent job. He just did outstanding all the way through. The other thing I want to note is with reference to that last comment, too, a minute ago, we do intend, in the coming months, to bring forward, if we can, some reports on the final financials of the Library and Community Center, the Wenzel Family Plaza, things like that, to address the very concern that some of you brought up, and rightfully so before, how did these turn out? So look for more reports in the months ahead.
All right. Thank you. Very well done, Dan. Item O, Update the 2020 City Budget Process Presented by Ron Ammon, Finance Director.
Thank you. Just wanted to give an update on where we're at with the process. So we've started the budget process. Departments have submitted everything. And we're taking a little different approach on the first pass of the budget. Previously, the first pass was department requested, meaning you could request anything you wanted in any amount. So we'd have a lot of requests dumping in, and then Steve would have to go through one at a time and take them out $500 at a time. So we're trying a little different approach this year, and I appreciate the departments kind of being patient with me on this. So we're trying to hold the first pass of the budget as close as we can to the 2019 adopted budget. So in the budget instructions, we requested that the only thing that goes in the first budget is approved staff, approved CIP, some real nominal utility increases, and then everything else not to exceed the 2019 adopted budget. So we can get a kind of a better look at, basically, what is the cost of this year's government or last year's government at this year's prices? You know, try to approximate a cost of living adjustment from there. And I do, again, I do appreciate the departments, because we don't have the ability with our software to just apply universal modifiers and everything, so they still have to go through the budget instructions and work through their budget and go from there. And then from that cost of living adjustment, a second piece they hand in is additional requests on top of that. So then our document trail starts with this cost of living budget, and anything else that goes in or out gets approved by Steve. So then he's got to review them one at a time and go from there. Hopefully, it'll help us streamline the process there. So some of the changes we made, and we've kind of talked about some of these, is on the debt side, we've completely split apart the debt service part, which the city is responsible for, and the TID portion of the debt. We had been kind of commingling all those. And if you recall, our TID debt at the end of 2018 was about 40% of our overall debt. So now, if you think of it, they're completely separated, there's no transfers. Think of it like an invoice. So when a debt payment comes in, the city debt service gets charged for their portion, the TID gets charged for their portion. So it'll be real easy to see in the budget, because we should levy to cover our portion of the debt service. The rest gets charged to their TIDS. And, you know, through their cash flow, they pay for that. As I mentioned, at Finance and Budget Personnel, you know, our good luck with the large debt issue we just did, getting a great rate, helped us close the gap on the, on the underfunding in the debt service that, you know, we can recover from that within another year or two. So one thing that's not in the initial budget is the non-city entities, which you'll see Thursday. So we start with them out, and then once the council approves, then we put them back in there. So where we are, as far as the status, the initial budgets have been submitted. Finance staff goes through and tech reviews them. Basically, are you submitting your initial budget in compliance with, you know, the budget manual instructions? Then we balance, we do some analysis, look for some odd things, and then move on from the general fund to, for example, the capital lay project funds, make sure they balance also. And the last thing we always do is like the levy and the revenues, because we don't have good information on a lot of the revenue part of it yet. We don't know our assessed value. So we kind of save that till last. We have gotten some good, good initial good news. We've had good net, new net growth, good equalized value growth, and our TIDS with the addition of PCA and just general growth, collectively, their increment value went up about 26%. A lot of that's PCA, but those are all doing well. So that's just kind of, wanted to give an update, make myself available for questions. I don't have any solid numbers yet, but we'll continue to provide updates, and I'll take any questions you have at this point.
Mr. Handler.
Ron, questions for you, please. Thank you very much. Question, on the TIDS, I'm glad you separated the two from the regular budget process. Are we, as a council, going to get a quarterly report on the TID itself?
Sure. We can. I think there's not a lot going on. Once you set them up, you know, there's really not a lot going on. We can, I can provide what I have for a budget for each of them. They're pretty straightforward. Activities, I know Josh and I can talk about activities, but yeah, we can just plan on a quarterly update if you'd like.
Well, the reason I ask, because going past, in the past years, we've never seen that.
Okay.
And I think it would make us feel more part of the process by having seen that. Now, the other thing in the budget process, there are some departments that have money set aside in their departments for projects. And some of these projects never materialize, but the funds stay there. What are you going to do with that?
So for, maybe, I didn't say it, so what, in the initial budget, it's approved staff, approved CIP, and then some, so if it's been approved already, it's already in. So if the project went through the CIP process and approved, it's in. You know, unless we get to the very end and we have to make some cuts at the end, but those are in the initial budget.
Okay, because I'm just curious, you know, and sometimes these things don't take place and money accumulates. And I'd rather see the money, you know, be used by departments for an actual purpose.
Sure.
Okay.
Anything further? Nope. I'm sorry, Steve.
Thank you. Just to add, if I'm understanding your question, too, on that one, Pete, the, if monies were budgeted for departments and they're not used during the budget year, so in other words, monies were approved for 2019, they're not spent, the department head would have to request to carry those forward, otherwise they would lapse into the general fund. So if someone says, look, I wanted to do this project or buy this piece of equipment, but I didn't because prices were bad or I couldn't for some reason, you may, in an annual resolution, carry those forward. Otherwise, those do lapse back into the general fund, which is where they rightfully belong at that point.
Thank you.
All right. Item P, Request to Consume Sale of City-Owned Land Located Along the West Side of Oak Avenue, North of West Fourth Street, to Two Abutting Land Owners, as follows. Larenough LLC and Eric and Amy Bozen, presented by Steve Vark, City Administrator.
Thank you. In early 2018, I was approached by Rem's Funeral Home, wanting to buy that parcel just north of them on the west side of Oak Avenue, across from Stephen J. Miller Park. And there were numerous conversations. The Board of Public Works talked about it quite a bit in terms of possible price, conditions, those types of things. Ultimately, it came forward to the council. This body approved everything from a conditional use permit to rezoning to other things. And we marched down the road. Ultimately, we sold the lion's share of that parcel to Larenough LLC, which I didn't realize at first what it is, it's funeral spelled backwards. And then the second, the second little piece was sent, sold to an abutting property owner at 305 Concord Avenue to add to their, to add to their land. The completion happened with the City Attorney's Office, the closings were held. And, you know, if you have a question, maybe Josh might be able to give an update on any discussions about use of the property. But it was brought to our attention that there was no formal one resolution by the council authorizing the sale, even though there are countless actions showing that that was always the intent, like I said, approval of various other permits and motions. So to clean all this up, we'd like to have a motion to formally approve, making a record of authorizing the sale, which has already, quite frankly, taken place.
Thank you. There is a motion by Mr. Whittle, second by Mr. Butke. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries nine to zero. Item Q, Request to Appoint Bill Pinker of 600 Sycamore Avenue to Complete a Vacant Term Ending April 30, 2020, and Allison Hawks of 2706 South Felker Avenue to Complete a Vacant Term Ending April 30, 2022, both for the Historic Preservation Committee. Is there a motion, a motion to approve by Mr. Whittle, second by Mr. Jockic? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries nine to zero. Item R, Request to Appoint Matt McLean of 1206 Fairview Drive to Complete a Vacant Term Ending April 30, 2020, on the City's Communication Committee. Is there a motion, a motion by Mr. Bargander, second by Mrs. Sparrows? Any discussion? Mr. Jockic.
Who dropped off?
I believe it was Mr. Bargander's son who accepted a job in Wisconsin Rapids, making it difficult for him to make any meeting times that would be set.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote. Motion carries nine to zero. And item S, Request to Appoint Bill Pinker, 600 Sycamore Avenue, as the first alternate to the Zoning Board of Appeals. There is a motion by Mr. Whittle, second by Mrs. Sparrows. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries nine to zero. Item T, Adjourn to Close Session Pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes Chapter 19.851E, Deliberating or Negotiating the Purchasing of Public Properties, the Investment of Public Funds or Conducting Other Specified Public Business Whenever Competitive or Bargaining Reasons Require Close Session, Possible Acquisition of Property in TID Number Four, Possible Development Agreement for Project in TID Number Ten, and Close Session Under Wisconsin Statutes Chapter 19.851G, Conferring with Legal Counsel for the Governmental Body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, Possible Litigation Involving Development Agreement in TID Number Seven, Possible Litigation Involving Contracted Services, and Close Session Pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes Chapter 19.851C, Considering Employment Promotion, Compensation, or Performance Evaluation Data of Any Public Employee Over Which a Governmental Body Has Jurisdiction or Exercise Responsibility, Review of City Administrator's Performance Review. There is a motion to go into a closed session by Mr. Whittle, second by Mrs. Sparrows. Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries nine to zero. We will take a quick five-minute break and then go into closed session.